Thursday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Can we all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance together? Jamie, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Jeff Capel?
Here.
Councilwoman Jill Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Lee Zerwanka?
Yes.
Councilman Brian Gabb?
Here.
Vice Mayor from Mo Javary?
Here.
Councilwoman Katie Schneider?
Yes.
Mayor Mark Serken?
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December ninth, two thousand twenty-one?
Approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any communications to counsel?
No, sir. There are none tonight, Your Honor.
Any reports from outside agencies? Seeing none. The mayor's report for December of two thousand twenty-one will be entered into the public record. And do I have a motion to accept the financial report for December of two thousand twenty-one?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Time for hearings from citizens. I'm gonna go with Michael Duncan, and I don't think I need to read you the rules and rights.
Mike Duncan, Jordan Placent, Blue Ash. First, I'd like to say I hope everyone has a good year. Mr. Mayor, council members, David, all the staff, myself, I appreciate all the work you do, and I know the last two years have been difficult, so I hope two-two is a much better year. Everybody except for probably Jill and Brian have heard kind of my presentation to some degree about the AARP tax aid program. As most of you know, we've been doing this for as long as I can remember. I've been, this is my eleventh year, in doing taxes for seniors and low to moderate income citizens. Last year was a very strange year. Two thousand twenty was stranger still. We worked up to about mid-March, then everything shut down. Last year, we did taxes, but much, many fewer sites. We had nineteen sites in the Cincinnati area, and we were down to less than half that last year. This year, we are back strong, and we do have sites that will be doing taxes at the, for the Blue Ash residents, if they listen to this, or if you get it out to your citizens, Sharonville Community Center on Wednesday and Friday, and JCC, the Myers and JCC Jewish Community Center Bridge on Thursdays. And it's a little bit different than it used to be in the past. We used to have our clients, as we call them, would come in, the taxpayer, they would sit across the table from us, we could do all their taxes, you know, chat with them, get to know them. Well, COVID put a dent for that, obviously. Last year, we had a hybrid model where people could come in to Sharonville particularly. JCC was not open last year, so we could not be taxed at JCC. But they would come in, some people would drop their stuff off, other people, we would scan their documents. We actually had some of our volunteers, this is all voluntary effort, they would do them at home after the scan document. That got very cumbersome. So the people that were working at the site, myself included, it was much easier with the drop-off. They would come in, inventory where we took from them, they would bring it back to our, we put them in storage, we'd bring them back to a counselor. We would do the taxes, we called people, talked to them, then they would come back in, pick up their finished return. As part of this process, we electronically file both their state and their federal. So it's all done, it's all free, costs absolutely nothing. In fact, we couldn't take money if we wanted to. It's part of the US Volunteer Act that protects us in what we do. We don't do every kind of tax. Sometimes they're a little too complicated or what's called out of scope. But normally, our taxpayers are elderly. Sometimes we'll get a young family in, especially at Myers, we get some younger folks in. But at the Sharonville Community Center, we typically have people that are sixty-five and older, or they're on Medicare, they have Social Security, IRA, retirement, a few other things, brokerage statements, we get. But we do all that for them and everything. Saves them probably between three, four, five hundred dollars from going to one of the commercial systems. So this year, we're back. But this is the way it's probably going to work. We're still working out the details. You will call either the Sharonville Community Center, call them, make an appointment, come in, pull up a booklet, actually an envelope, that's got instructions on what you need to bring in. Bring it back in, inventory what you bring in, go through pattern interview process, a very brief one. And then, again, you'll drop off all your stuff, and one of our tax counselors will do the work on either Wednesday or Friday. The drop-off date will be Tuesday, but people need to call the community center, Sharonville Community Center. Their number is usually taken away with me, and make an appointment, come in, drop your stuff off. At the Myers, and at least right now, what we're looking at is people will come in, they won't be face-to-face with the counselor, but they'll become, be able to come in that day and bring your stuff, it will be their taxes that day. And then they will be able to come back later in the day, or even wait for it if there's a space at Myers for them. Obviously, with COVID, I wear a mask whenever I'm inside, so you can hear me. I've been fully vaccinated, pushing and all the other stuff. But you don't know who has, who hasn't, close confides and everything. I even wear my mask to church during services and everything. So a lot of people being careful, and so Sharonville Community Center and the JCC, they're all being careful in what they do. And so we're careful, but we want to tax, we're expecting in the region to be able to do probably three thousand and thirty-five hundred tax returns for our citizens. Again, it's primarily for the elderly and low to moderate income. We occasionally get people with a little bit more than that in, but a lot of them will come in or something. So if you would let your constituents know, if they need to know how to drop stuff off, call the Sharonville Community Center. I would recommend waiting until the last week of January. We start doing taxes on the first week of February. So our first tax dates are the second and fourth at the Sharonville Community Center, and it'll be on the third at the Myers JCC. And Sharonville Community Center Drive, Creek Drive, on the corner of Thorpe. So if you'd like your folks on, if you could, it's a great service. We've been doing it for many, many years. It's a pleasure to be able to do this with a lot of people. We save a lot of people a lot of money, not just in tax preparation, but I'm in the middle of training this week. We've been doing training Monday through Thursday, and then we'll do it again tomorrow. We're doing it virtually, as opposed to them. So we do it over the computer and everything, and we've got sixty-two people that are in the training. So we have a lot of tax counselors that are all over the city. Most people do two to three days, and so we're able to do a lot of good, particularly for our senior and low to moderate income folks. Some questions I'd be glad to answer, if I can.
Mike, what age are you guys determining as senior?
Senior is a person that looks like a senior. Senior technically for us is anybody who's, say, fifty-five and over. You know, Brian would fit in that category. The team is not there yet, but, and again, there's no real restriction. We've done tax returns for people in their twenties, you know, they have a simple tax return, they come in, they have kids. There's a lot of credits this year, extra credits, the child tax credit went up, and a lot of people are getting that, here are new come credits. A lot of low-income people, we were able to find credits for them that they're able to get refunds, even if they pay very little or no taxes, as a way to help low-income people out there. And a lot of our seniors, we get people in that are living strictly on Social Security, and it's challenging for them and everything. But we do what we can to try to help them get every legal dollar we can back for them, or to reduce their, how much they owe in taxes, everything we can. And we know most of the laws and rules and regulations where we can save people as much money as any professional tax preparer.
I thought that was worth asking, just because fifty is when you can join AARP, RPA. Fifty-five is when you can move into the certain living centers, and fifty-nine and a half is when you can start your IRAs, and Social Security is in your sixties. So the big question now, like, what is a senior anymore?
By the way, for a few of us, they did change the rules on requirement and distributions that you have to take out of your IRA or your other deferred comp plans, and you don't have to start doing that until you're seventy-two. But the, one rule they didn't change is at seventy and a half, which used to be that, that was qualified charitable distribution. A lot of people give it to churches and other charitable organizations. You can do that without having to pay any taxes on it through what's called a QCD, and you can do that at seventy and a half. I don't know if any folks are there yet, but I'm getting there soon. I'll turn seventy next year, so I'm getting close. So anyway, seniors are typically, we say fifty-five, but in reality, we do taxes for. We get one lady come in, this is a true statement, that's what I can remember. She had actually won the lottery. She was ninety-two years old, her son brought her in, and she'd been collecting on the lottery almost a hundred thousand dollars a year for twenty-six years. That's when we were at the senior center that used to be here at Blue Ash, that was many years ago. So we get everybody from, you know, young people who have a, maybe a young family, if you have kids, all the way up to people in their nineties. Please have them come see us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is anybody else from Hearings for Citizens? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to the committee reports, Finance and Administration. Councilmember Zerwanka, we have a few tonight. Jamie, please read Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-one by Title Only.
Providing for amendments within the two thousand twenty-two Annual Appropriation Resolution Number two thousand twenty-one dash sixty-four.
Move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-one?
Second.
Any discussion? Done. Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Councilman Gabb?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Jamie, please read Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-two by Title Only.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a multi-year collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., the Police Sergeants Bargaining Unit.
Move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-two?
Second.
Any discussion? Done. Jamie, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Gabb?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Jamie, please read Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty by Title Only.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the opioid settlement and enter into the participation agreement with opioid manufacturers Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., Ortho McNeil Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and Janssen Pharmaceutical, Inc.
Move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-three?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just looked, smoked, when they applied, what are you expecting to get money out of?
We don't have any estimates about what we'll get, and we also expect it to be probably restricted as to what we can use it for.
That's all. Any other questions?
Do we have the idea of the timing?
By the end of January.
Right, and it's also a time court. There a filing deadline? To, we even, we are, to apply, yeah, we are complying with, I don't remember what the deadline is, but we're complying with my rules. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilman Gabb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Please read Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-four by Title Only.
Supporting an application for Ohio Brownfield Remediation Program funding for the demolition of vacant buildings at eleven five hundred Reed Hartman Highway.
Move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-four?
Second.
Any discussion? I was just gonna say, Dave, do you want?
Yeah, sure, we have to just, you know, restate very basic premise. It is a brand-new program, so we don't really know what makes it competitive, what won't be competitive. But it is first come, first served, and they're doing several rounds, assuming they don't use all the money in the first round. But they think, it sounds like they'll probably use all the money in the first round, which would be, and they think by March. So we thought, you know, it would make sense for the developer to apply for this, and we will, in the meantime, figure out where we can get the local match, because it's very well-leveraged. And the mayor asked a couple of days ago, you know, how much taxes are we getting on that property right now? We're only getting four thousand six hundred dollars a year in taxes on it. So, you know, just definitely gonna take some work to get that property converted, especially with the asbestos and what have you on that.
One thing I just wanted to clarify is that passing this resolution doesn't by itself commit us to doing any future funding of the project.
It really just cleans up the property, basically, which it means. And as I understand it, there's a likelihood that we have a TIF that would repay us, whatever, before we put up. Correct? I'm not saying that incorrectly?
I didn't go ahead with that.
I said, it's likely that there'd be a TIF as part of this, and we'd get everything paid back if we did front some money for something clean up. Any other comments? Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Gabb?
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Jamie, please read, now I have a couple ordinances, please read Ordinance Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-one by Title Only.
An ordinance adding and enacting Chapter three forty-three to Title Five under Part Three of the Blue Ash Code of Ordinances Traffic Code regarding the regulation of underspeed and lowspeed vehicles. And this is a first reading and will not be voted on tonight.
Correct. Move to suspend the rules of counsel requiring a second reading?
We don't, we won't be voting.
Oh, sorry, yep, threw that in there. Any, we'll go into discussion there. I'm just saying, if we're not reading, we're not discussing. We talked about this ad nauseam. Everybody here, with the exception of Brian, did approve a motion for us to at least get the legislation put together and vote on it. So what I'm hoping we can do is anybody who's neutral or in favor of this, let's decide which one of these two we want to vote on at the next meeting. One restricts the golf carts to roads that are twenty-five miles or less. The other one allows it on thirty-five miles or less. The thirty-five mile an hour would allow them to use it on anything, with the exception of Reed Hartman Highway. So I'm not asking what you're gonna vote on or anything like that, but I'd like us to not just blow this off, to get the legislation, pick it, and then vote on it on the next, the next, the council meeting, and I think it's February tenth. We're going for consensus, as much as I can give, as we can get, so that we can kind of direct city staff which one we want to vote with. So I am going to say I think it would be easier to have one with less restrictions and let people decide what they feel comfortable doing, just like when they ride a bike. I've said it a hundred times, so I don't want to repeat myself anymore. So that's where I'm at.
I agree with Adam. I think less restrictions is better, and it's in alignment with the Ohio. Every road but Reed Hartman.
Voice, it is just because of one or two guys. Car going in the street, and that's where it started all these things. But I think we should just move back. Whatever the, you know, choices are, and whatever we have in the past, but to continue with that. I just don't agree with this ordinance at all.
So you're saying thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-five? Anybody else?
Peter, did you say you don't agree with the ordinance at all?
Yeah. Just, I don't want this ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
I would just stay on table it for a long time, and that's all I, my feelings are. Except, you know, people going and being there on the street. At golf carts, it happens once in a while, all of a sudden, why you want to restrict on people where they can go and where they cannot go? So I just. On the ten on. That's my.
Well, I would say to answer the mayor's question, I think it makes more sense, I agree with the others who spoke, and it makes more sense to vote on the one with thirty-five miles per hour, because especially when I'm looking at this map, there's a good number of streets that are thirty-five, and if we voted on the twenty-five, it's almost like what, what right would we even be passing? And then, and when we do vote on this, I know I'm gonna annoy a couple of people when I say this. I may well have a couple of amendments, which I think can make the legislation better. But even with that, having the thirty-five mile per hour legislation as the canvas to work off of makes a lot more sense than starting with the twenty-five mile per hour one, and then trying to bring it up to something that makes sense.
I guess, excuse me, from my perspective, I just feel like this, this situation, I agree with if we're gonna vote on one at thirty-five mile an hour makes sense, because the other is just not really workable, you know, it wouldn't be functional at all. But I just, I just have this feeling that, you know, there's not that many people that want to do this, and it's kind of creates, it's not consistent with the environment in Blue Ash, you know, it's, this isn't a totally residential, you know, we're a third business, third residential, and third recreation. Our streets are not super wide, we don't have wide bike path, you know, so there's, I just have concerns about it. But I do agree that if we, the one that we vote on, I would think should be the thirty-five mile an hour, the least restrictive.
Any comments?
Ditto, Jill said the same.
I will be voting for.
Either.
Though it seems like we have more people at least want to vote on the thirty-five mile an hour version, so that seems like a consensus, at least on that. Passes or not is, you know, that's up to the vote next time. Again, this is a first reading. Yes. So that will be. Do we need to make a motion on which one?
There you go.
So I'd like to make a motion that we vote on the ordinance twenty oh twenty-two dash oh-one that includes the less restrictive thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, which would mirror what the state of Ohio uses as their parameters. That will be the second reading? Yes.
While you're making a motion, that's the first reading tonight, so yeah, make that motion made by the mayor, so we can step on that motion.
Second.
Right.
Can we do a voice of all in favor? Let's do a voice, yeah, I mean, we have, we have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so I have a first reading on thirty-five mile per hour, and then hopefully I have a second reading.
All right. Moving on to the next ordinance. Jamie, please read Ordinance Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-two by Title Only, and this will be voted on.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to resolve the pending court case between the City of Blue Ash and KM Blue Ash Development Company concerning the appropriation of certain property interests necessary for the purpose of a road improvement project on Hunt Road and Plainfield Road, the Ham Plainfield Road roundabouts, in the City of Blue Ash, Hamilton County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules of counsel requiring a second reading?
Second.
Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Gabb?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Move to adopt Ordinance Number two thousand twenty-two dash two?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilman Gabb?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All I have, mayor. Thank you. We're gonna move to Public Works Committee, Councilmember Jill Cole.
Thank you. Jamie, would you please read Resolution Number twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash oh-five by Title Only?
Authorizing the city manager to make payment for professional traffic signal system parts, repair and maintenance services, and utility marketing and locating services throughout two thousand twenty-two.
Move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-five?
Second.
This is just a normal budgeted item that we do every year. This company's been used for a very long time. Does anybody have any questions or other comments? Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Councilman Gabb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. Jamie, would you please, please read Resolution Number twenty twenty-two dash oh-six by Title Only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of Buck Rock Salt.
Move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash oh-six?
Second.
Are there any questions about this? It's pretty straightforward.
I think it's always the same amount every year. It's like seventy bucks every year, give or take a few dollars. Am I crazy? I'm older than you, so.
Last year was the seventy-two point eight?
Yeah, it was, it's gone up significantly.
Gone up?
Yeah.
What was the last year? What was the last year? The same amount? Seventy-two point eight?
Yeah, it's, it's been relatively the same. Expensive, thank you.
Hopefully, we don't need very much of it this year. Oh, it's gonna, it's gonna slide east of us, my prediction. Are there any other questions? Jamie, please call the roll.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Councilman Gabb?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, we're gonna move to the Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Capel. Jamie, please read Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash zero seven by Title Only.
Authorizing the purchase of four replacement police cruisers for the police department, utilizing the State of Ohio's Cooperative Purchasing Program and the disposal of four surplus vehicles.
Pretty self-explanatory. Chief, did you have anything to add?
Move to adopt.
All right, I'll move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand twenty-two dash zero seven?
Second.
Okay. Chief, do you want to add anything? All right, and anybody else need to add anything?
I'll ask one question. How many cruisers do we have, and I've been here for, I have seen these people, replacement, but it's just a brand new, what, can you give us some?
I can only hear half of what he said, I heard.
I did, yeah.
How many marked cruisers do we have?
Yes. First question was how many cruisers we have. Second, that we passed before, some four or five, this cruiser. But this is some different one than that one, is an old one, replacing?
I believe we have either fourteen or fifteen marked cruisers, and these are replacement for cruisers that have upwards of a hundred thousand miles. Two of them were actually from two thousand twenty-one that we couldn't order, that have rolled over into twenty-two. So basically, it's two from two thousand twenty-one and two from two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Man, the only comment I have is, I think this is very well thought out. I would love to see the city consider in the future whether there are electric vehicles that are feasible for this product. Probably at the cutting edge, and probably may well not be feasible at this time, but I can keep my eye out for that.
Generally limited to the state purchase program, if I remember, yes.
Brian, I'm sorry, I couldn't understand what your question was. Could you, or your comment?
My comment was that I would like us to keep our eyes open and consider as they become practical electric vehicles for this purpose. I know that these come through the state, but I also know that we bought a couple Pajos from a dealer in Indiana, so there's probably other ways to buy these things. But, and I don't know that the answer is feasible at this time, but I'm sure our law enforcement professionals get all kinds of magazines telling whether this stuff is good or not. I'd be interested, so.
Okay, are there any other comments on this? Jamie, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Javary?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Yes.
Councilman Gabb?
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman Capel?
Yes.
Mayor Serken?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
All right, we're gonna move to Miss Lane's business, Kenwood Cooper Corner Project. I think David is gonna give us a little start, and then we're gonna move to the developer.
So, Dean and Kelly are setting up. Dean with, Dean Lutton with Red Start Design, who's been here several times before. It's been several months since.
Uh, it's been several months since they've had a discussion with council, asked them to come back, uh, give you an update as well as, um, you know, give you an opportunity to ask more questions and talk about potential next steps. Just to set this up, if you recall, the last meeting we had, I think, was in early fall, late summer. We provided an update on, um, the market study that, um, the consultant from Canada, provided in which they changed the formula of some of the uses here. And then, um, in the meantime, um, obviously, that they, they've adjusted some of the plans. And, and I think now they're interested in starting to approach the schools about, uh, potential TIF projects like this often use, uh, TIF dollars. And we can talk about when it's over, what that means and what have you. So without taking any of Dean's presentation away, um, uh, I, I think the highlight was, because I saw the slide earlier today, to me was, um, oh wow, we've been discussing this two years. And so I'll let Dean talk about it.
Thank you. Dean Love with Red Start Design Studio, representing Circle Development. Thank you for, for having us here again and, uh, just real brief overview. Uh, I know there's at least one new council member, uh, I'm sure everyone's aware of the project, so I won't bore you with details, but, uh, there's been a little bit of an update, uh, so we'll go through that. Again, the site, a little bit different than it's shown here because demolition hasn't occurred, of course. Uh, the city owns a little over a third of the overall site that we're proposing this mixed-use development on. And Circle Development owns the other 3.8 acres. So a little timeline, um, of, of this site and, uh, kind of the parts that go into it. Back in April of 2020, Blue Ash adopted the downtown strategy plan, which really set the framework for how we've approached this project, looking through all the criteria that you all, uh, sat down and, and tried to check off every one of those pieces. It is a good, uh, strategic plan and, uh, we, we hope you agree that this checks all those boxes. Uh, in December of that year, the city acquired the Husper property as, uh, a way to control how development happens in downtown, which was a wonderful strategic move, move, move. Then in January of 2021, uh, we, uh, met with you all, uh, via Zoom, uh, had an introduction of the development team and we listened to, uh, what you all wanted to have as part of the property. So that combined with the downtown strategy plan is really what set up the basis of how we were going to propose, uh, this project. We came back in April of 2021 and presented our, our, after many renditions in-house, what we thought was the appropriate usage of the site, highest and best use. It had a 75 to 85 key hotel, at 30,000 square feet of retail, at 17,000 square feet of office, and 250 residential units. So we discussed that, uh, uh, we presented it, you had many questions and it was great feedback. Uh, at the end of that session, uh, especially because we're in the middle of COVID and just the way the market was, we heard that you wanted us to prove that these uses are appropriate. So conduct a market study, market studies and figure out what really should be there, not just what we would like to happen. So we conducted this study, we actually had a couple of different companies working on a market study. The main, uh, one for the retail portion and the commercial portion, uh, was GRS, which is worldwide, very well, uh, renowned. It's done other market studies in, in the area as well. Came back, uh, and we, we presented, uh, those findings and, uh, readjustment of the plan based on that market study in August of 2021. Uh, we removed the hotel. They said, potentially, when you get out to 2027, 2028, a hotel could be viable if it was a specialty boutique hotel. That was just too far out. We want something successful right away and, uh, that, uh, with the mix, uh, wasn't, uh, they, they said that could be a potential, but it wasn't, uh, as solid, but solid of a result and as synergistic with the other uses as everything else. They actually came back and said instead of 30,000 square feet of retail, you should have 65,000 square feet of restaurant, retail, entertainment, um, general and specialty retail. And they broke it out into many different categories, which I won't go into here. But over half, uh, 35,000 of that 65,000 was to be food and beverage and entertainment, which is the dynamic that is still growing in retail. It's the destination, it's the experiential, it's restaurants, it's all of it. And that's really what drives foot track to with any mixed-use or retail center leases. They said 35,000 square feet of office, uh, which, uh, is a specialty office, whether a portion is a week work type of, uh, assess, type of, uh, situation. Uh, it's boutique, smaller, uh, medical office was a component of that, like smaller, uh, medical office. Not a big campus type project, it's not, uh, something that would be around Summit Park or something like that. It's a specialty downtown, uh, market. And then finally, they actually said, if you can get more residential on the site, the bet, we said, we're not going more than 250. We, we feel from a, a, a volume on the site, we can set the residential back, so it's not visually the dominant, uh, use. We, we push that back and make the retail dominant. They felt that 250, uh, 250 units was sufficient to create a critical mass, uh, even if we didn't go above that. So we're not, uh, going anywhere, uh, higher than that. But they did, they did say without the residential, it's not accessible. You need the built-in residents to have the, alive after five, to, to have the built-in people that are, uh, at the restaurants, activating that, that street scape. And the density going from basically more than doubling, we had 47,000 square feet of retail and office, and we're at 100,000 square feet of restaurant, retail and office. That, a critical part of that was to create, uh, a critical mass. So that instead of drawing from two to five miles away, you're now drawing people five to eight, 10 miles away. And that is then what drives the other uses and helps that, uh, become more successful. So this is a new rendering, uh, the, the last time we met, we presented the market study, but we did, did not have updated renderings yet. This is showing the second level of office above the, uh, level that was there previously. So we have three levels on the corner. Here are still fabulous materials, uh, articulation of the street scape, uh, pulling back. A, a critical part of the downtown strategy plan was creating places for people, walkability, uh, uh, texture and, and articulation in the buildings. Uh, so that the buildings pulled back to create this, uh, public type plaza and have dining that overlooks that, the plaza there. Still well below the height of the building across the street, uh, that at five stories, we're at three stories, so not over dominant by any means, but really creating this really nice relief at the corner, uh, as you turn from Cooper to Kenwood. And then as we move up the street, you can see, uh, across the street, uh, a much taller building. We're, you know, focusing on that dining, that entertainment to really create this active street scape. Whether it's outside when the weather's nice or maybe just inside or with bubbles or something, but when the weather's not as nice. Activating that street scape, uh, make it, making it a lively place is, people drive people there. If you have people living there, they're on the street, uh, you have people, we have, we're proposing parallel parking, uh, along the street to have convenient parking to get to the restaurants and retail, which further activates the street and actually creates a, a safety buffer between the traffic on the street and the people walking on the sidewalk and, and enjoying the retail and restaurant tenants. Moving further up the street, uh, the north on Kenwood, you'll see there's a lot of topography on the site actually from end to end, but creating steps and ramping so that, that these obviously are all accessible storefronts. Uh, and here's an example of the residential above being pushed back so that, we, we're, we're standing in a parallel parking spot right now. You can just barely see the top of the top level of residential, so that when you're on that street scape, it, it's all about the retail. It's all about the commercial use. Again, fabulous with materials, brick and stone and glass and, and metal. And then fi- finally, this image, again, really highlighting that food and beverage, uh, type tenant that we're looking for, or tenants, I should say, and creating another public, uh, stopping point part to break up the, the really long facade into smaller manageable pieces that people want to stop and stay and spend money and live at the place. So the site, uh, before, a number of buildings were demoed. And just to, to reiterate the, the pains we took to make this a condensed site to pull away from the railroad tracks. So that if the corners of the buildings that are, they're closest to the railroad tracks are still about 100 feet away from the first residential property that's on the other side of the railroad tracks. And, and most of the buildings pulling even farther away from that. Keeping pedestrians on that street scape along Kenwood and activating that, focusing all our energy there, hiding the parking, uh, accessing that parking from, from, uh, off of Cooper or even off of Kenwood. We, we have circulation, uh, path that connects, uh, from Kenwood all the way up and around to, to, uh, Cooper at Blue Ash Road. So bringing and hiding that parking, making the density so that we could have, uh, enough critical mass to create the synergistic uses. It, it requires a lot of gymnastics, but making those service and, uh, access points particularly not cross the pedestrian paths and, uh, creating easy access from, from the parking. I guess I can't point with this, but for where the number one is, uh, that parking garage being the main public parking piece and coming right through into the heart, the center, that central park piece of the retail, giving all the feed in each direction. Oh yeah, I guess I just have one point. The orange block on the left there, uh, actually have the two levels of office there that are access from, uh, the corner of that garage. There's an elevator that goes up, uh, an elevator lobby for that office. And they also have access from, uh, the center of the block, the street scape portion as well. So in summary, we're really excited about this. It looks pretty, I think it's going to function well, we've really thought through that in, in this early stage. But more importantly than all of that, uh, we had the UC Economics Research Center do a whole study on it. And a, a few of the key highlights are construction jobs, 653 total jobs during construction. Permanent jobs, 569 total jobs. Construction earning records, $745,000 in total earnings tax revenue to Blue Ash. And then permanent earnings, almost half a million dollars every year to Blue Ash. This is what UC Economics has gone and studied, there's a lot more data, but these are some of the, the big key findings. We're really excited to, and have confirmation that our, our gut feeling that this is, is the right end and having. Now, the market study and having UC Economics Research go and do a, a study and analysis of, of the benefits of this really are coming to fruition. So we're really excited about how this has, has come so far. Our next steps are to, to work with the city and, uh, the schools on how, uh, a, a TIF funding process, uh, could help get this off the ground. Obviously with a very dense project, with lots of infrastructure, with public parking, all that stuff costs more upfront, but has a really big value ongoing in perpetuity. So we're really excited, uh, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to, to answer them, but just excited to kind of take, take this to the next step.
I have one question.
Yes.
No, you got it, you got it. I just wanted to find out, um, we have a 250 apartment that you talked to me about residential. So total parking, what's the number of parking, car parking that you have in this project?
I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. I remember last time I had a, a diagram up that talked about the mix of parking because we would, uh, propose to have very efficient shared usage. Uh, I think if we did not mix and we had blocked usage for each use, it would need to be 800 some, uh, vehicles. But since we have off-usage, people aren't at home, they're at work or they're, or they work at home at the same place, uh, at, or in, in this project, uh, where there, people are shopping during the day and people are away at work. Uh, I think we brought it down to 680 cars, something like that overall.
Is that broken between public parking and private parking?
There, there are two, right now, we're proposing. So, uh, the, the parking garage on the left is a two-level parking garage, actually, we can total it up right there. There's 220 cars, uh, across two levels on the left and that would be, uh, the, the public parking room, just as we see it. The garage on the right is taller and it's all encompassed as it goes up. Um, and that is 435 cars, I think it's four or five levels altogether. And we see that as the primary residential parking.
Well, would you be giving more than one reserved spot for each apartment, even? Depending on if it's a two-bedroom or?
We would have to look at how that, that plays out, especially with the mix of uses. When we looked at it originally, we were looking at one reserved spot per unit. But then with the flex, there would always be more, uh, and sort of sizing it appropriately for the, the quantity of retail restaurants and everything.
Isn't it sometimes you consider as a one and a half cars for each apartment or something like that? And that is some probably the public parking for the 65,000 square feet of, uh, mixed-use, uh, the resident car. We're talking about the entertainment and the offices and everything.
Correct, and we, we have a program that you plug in all the uses and set that, you know, four cars per thousand or whatever that criteria is for the type of use and the type of use that it is. And it plots out based on, you know, if it's an office, the workday is between X and Y, and that's when your high usage is, and then it drops off dramatically, obviously, after hours. So, um, that all gets calculated in and we would go through all the appropriate, uh, planning commission and review so that everyone is comfortable with the number of cars we're, or spaces we're providing for cars.
The only reason I'm talking about this parking is because right across where the sleepy B and other, uh, every day in the morning, it's very hard to get any parking. And, uh, people, uh, they might be losing the business. So I just want to make sure that the space you're providing for the entertainment and for offices and everything, make sure that we have enough parking over there, so people do not lose the money because of the parking.
I agree, that when, when I can't find a spot to go to sleepy B, I get upset too. What, what's really nice about mixed-use projects, because there's the diversity of uses, um, that you can have essentially surplus parking for any particular use, uh, because there's other uses that aren't using that parking at the time. So instead of being very inefficient and saying, here's an office building and the, the surface parking lot that's provided that hits empty 16 hours in a day, full, you know, eight hours, you can now utilize that 16 hours worth of empty and have residence parking there or, or a portion. You, you want to have a buffer, you don't, you, you don't, you know, nail down, uh, to, to, to the exact space. You, you create a buffer to ensure that there is, uh, parking there.
So any TIF funds would be applied, uh, like parking, correct?
I, I believe that's how it works. I'm not an expert in TIF.
Yeah, he's more of a sign guy. Unfortunately, the TIF people had COVID, so they couldn't come tonight. But Kelly and I can briefly speak to it. So yeah, TIF has to go towards public purposes, the, the garage probably would, um, would be of such a cost, it would probably use almost all of the TIF and it'd be very little spent on other stuff and that would come out of developer funds. But we, we did meet with the development team, um, earlier this week and some of the bonding consultants and, um, financing consultants that they have. And, and it's a lot of the same guys we've used on other projects. And their initial scope is if we did a standard TIF arrangement with school, similar to what we did at Summit Park, similar to what is going on over in, um, we did at Summit Park, similar to what is going on over in, there's a Montgomery quarter or something like that. You know, there appears to be funds to be able to pay for a good portion of the public improvement, primarily the garage and then some of the other public streetscaping improvements. Then the school would get its share that it's normally looking for, and there may even be some room in there for some extras. And as part of that deal structure, we would actually have them reimburse us for some of the land costs too. So, you know, we'd kind of be net neutral when we're all done. And one thing, going back to the economic study, I think they said about a half million dollars a year, that does not include the residents that would live there. So, you know, taking percentage of the residents that are there, that would not be paying taxes somewhere else and will pay taxes to us, that number is probably bumped up even more. The other, I guess, two other comments I'll finish with. One is over the past year, I've gone several times to downtown Loveland, and I lived in Loveland over 15 years ago. And it was okay, but it's really exponentially gotten really healthy the last few years. And so if you go there now, it's actually very difficult to get there. And PJ, it's a great question about parking. Loveland now has a major parking problem, but I remember meeting with a mayor in Naperville, one of the premier cities in the country, and he says, everyone says we have a parking problem downtown. And he says, but it's not a problem. It means there's demand and, you know, you don't want a bunch of vacant lots. We actually don't have a parking problem downtown PJ. We have one lot to squeeze, we have access in other places or just in the wrong place. Well, that's a separate issue than this. But my point of all that was, you know, it's hard for me to envision that, wow, Loveland, you know, even though it's very organic and then now, you know, they built some things and they've got a cornerstone project, and it's not even a very nice project that they built, but it's really helped revive that whole area and it's impressive and it's restaurant list. And that would certainly be, I know many of your goals, part of this. And then the last thing I would keep reiterating, I always want to give them kudos because it's probably the best upfront design job I've seen by developers in terms of really articulating the buildings and having public spaces and what have you. So I'll continue to give them credit. I'm sure I'll beat them up on something later as we go through the TIF and the financing process. But, you know, the next step would be for us to go to the schools, start working it out, getting their comfort level. And the way that it's worked in the past is the schools eventually bless the project from a financing standpoint. It doesn't mean they're endorsing the whole project and then come back and say, okay, they're ready to go. And it's a very detailed process, but it really is pretty simple. Once it meets all those criterias and those people involved in doing the due diligence on floating bonds on it, it comes together. And this one doesn't appear to be needing anything more than the typical TIFs we've done several times now, and it's typical in the Sycamore School District.
So we proceed with the TIF component of it while we're still finalizing the design and the concept?
Yeah, that would be a separate set of approvals also that you would need to do is you would ultimately have to, you know, grant approval of the development itself, a development agreement that specifies what you want and what you accept out of it. And then ultimately, you'll have to grant zoning approval.
Right. But I'm just thinking, you know, we don't wait until we've all got it laid out before we proceed with the TIF work.
Well, I think you run it concurrently. You know, if one is going to completely stop, then you probably don't want to spend too much time on the other one. But it certainly seems that, you know, a logical next step for you is, you know, us to start talking to the school and getting their feedback. And maybe informally already given a some that they understand is coming and seems reasonable to them. And then in the meantime, yeah, you'll want to go through that process on the PBD process.
I think one of the features that Loveland has that benefits them too is having that bike trail there, you know, that's a big goal.
You know, rivers, bike trails, there's always something, right?
Mr. Lutton, I had a couple of questions I didn't get to. I wasn't on council when JRS came, but it was a very informative study. Personally, say, this is a really cool project. I called it a once-in-a-lifetime project, and I think it is, but that makes me feel the pressure of really getting it right. In the market study, I recall the consultant saying, oh, you know, the market would sustain 300 and something residences, and we need residents here because there are certain retail and restaurant spaces that count houses and say, if there's not X rooftops, he called them, in a certain distance, they're not going to consider the project. What he didn't tell us was how many were short. Are we short 250 rooftops? Are we short 50 rooftops? Because, and help me understand maybe, because one of the things that you said was that by expanding the restaurant, retail, entertainment space, we'd be drawing further away. So in my mind, that puts less need or less pressure on having a lot of apartments in the same development. So I'd like to know your thoughts there.
Sure. I don't know the number of rooftops, and I know, I believe his comment was, when you look at like national retailers and they're coming in, like if they're choosing to go to Kenwood Town Center or something like, just that typical national chain, they look at rooftops and they figure out, you know, where strategically to locate. So I know this area in general has many rooftops with high income, so it's a very important place from a retailing standpoint. So I don't know, I'd have to go back and listen to and read through his analysis to see how that relates to specifically rooftops that are on the site as opposed to not having any rooftops on the site. So I can't really speak to that without looking back at it or asking him what his intent was on that, which I can do.
Yeah, that'd be great information because...
Brian, let me just, and I don't recall that being an emphasis, Mike, several conversations with the consultant on the side, certainly can ask, but what I understood, part of what makes mixed-use successful is, you know, some amount of residential around it. But within the development itself, the ability to get that density of desirable retailers often has to be subsidized by the cost of having the entirety of a portfolio for cash flow for the whole thing. And so, I mean, that's always been my understanding of kind of how this works. In order, you couldn't necessarily or not likely be as successful to have just a bunch of freestanding retail operations without cash flow also residential. And then on top of that, the rest, those retailers like having residential so close, they're very likely to stop in for a cup of coffee, much more frequent than someone eight miles away or something like that. I don't recall the eight-mile-away conversation, but that's, that might not answer your question, but that was kind of my understanding of premise.
No, and that's really good. You know, the Business Courier presentation on mixed-use development really talked about that, and they were saying that the retail restaurant space was probably a lost leader for a lot of developments, and it was the, you know, they only made it up in the rest, in the apartments. And so that's my other question is, how many apartments do we need to do to make this, make this project financially feasible? I feel a lot of pressure from our residents to minimize the number of apartments that are there, and to a point, I agree with that. I support this project in general. I think there's a couple of things that obviously we'll have to do long before we're done trafficking, figuring out how everybody's going to get through that intersection. It may be just great when somebody just needs to tell us that. I see that since the beginning layout, you've added an access road off of Kenwood near Laurel Avenue. That doesn't line up. I'm concerned about how that works. Kenwood Road is difficult to get out on already, and that's a minor thing. It's probably like county parking spaces, but it's one of the concerns I have that I'm sure we can work out. I had three items to go over. If we can move to the slide that mentioned the UC Economics Center's studies. I just want to throw out a caution to everybody to take numbers like that with a real grain of salt and to not be heavily reliant on them when making your decisions. I learned many years ago that these kind of economic impact studies are quite often wrong and often very over-optimistic. And in particular, the UC Economics Center has put out some world-class stingers over the years. So, you know, and one example I'll give to that is when you see the phrase "jobs supported", that's often a tactic used to kind of blow up the impact of something far more than it really is. If I walk into McDonald's and order a hamburger, you could say that I've supported the 20 jobs of the people working there at the time, or maybe I'm supporting the 60 jobs of the people who work at that McDonald's. At this development, if somebody walks over to Blue Ash Chili and orders a burger, are they now supporting 20 jobs if they walk across the street to CBS to get their prescription filled and maybe buy some toilet paper and a gallon of milk there? Did they now just support 40 different jobs? So saying "jobs created and jobs supported" can mean there can be a huge gap between those two. So that's a comment. I really want to make sure I drill that into people, that numbers like that really have to be taken with a grain of salt. And when you see those, like the final two numbers there, the 485,000 in total annual earnings taxes a year, and the 745K of total construction taxes, don't necessarily believe that those are true and don't be relying on them to support the project or not.
Let me, I know you should get a couple of other points, so just a point of clarification for the rest of the council, particularly Brian as a new council member. When we started this venture, we never said it was going to be an economic return project anyways. It was always a community return. This, and the developer didn't provide this to prove a point or say, yeah, if you do this, you're going to do it. I think they just thought it might be helpful for you to also have some augmenting information. And so, Jeff, your points won't take, and you don't need to take this, you can take this with a grain of salt because, you know, when council philosophy went into this, it wasn't about making sure we hit a certain number anyways. It was a quality improvement for the community.
Yeah, that's, I understand your points there. It's just these kind of studies have been used many times in this region to mislead elected officials into supporting things that they really shouldn't have been supporting. I want to make sure that that's not going to be happening to us.
May I make a comment to help?
Don't.
They're obviously top, top-level numbers, and the previous version of this slide, at the end of each one, I had a percentage of direct impact versus indirect, and I think this is how they address some of your concern. Each one of those four stats there was approximately 75 or so direct supported or direct revenues to of the project itself, and then the rest, 20, 25%, depending on the number, was indirect. I'd have to read through this study to quantify exactly what that means, but I think that starts to address some of the concerns, whether, yeah, is it indirect because they just bought the hamburger and they just supported 20 people that work at McDonald's? Or is it direct because it's now a new job on the site? And the full study goes into more detail on that, so maybe that'll alleviate your concerns.
But just to reiterate Jeff's point, council has never asked for this to be, you know, justification anyway, so you can throw it all away if you want, brother.
Okay, and then for my second item, can we go to the slide that kind of shows the overview of the project? That one, yeah. So when I walked the street of the residents, so on Miller Avenue, I walked that street several months ago to talk to the residents. So we're talking the residents on the west side of this project at the top of the screen there. I walked that street to talk to the residents to make sure I was understanding any concerns that they had. I didn't want to assume that I already knew them all, so I went to talk to them. And one of the big ones, they, of course, that came up was the visual issue of not having, whether it's too close to them or too unsightly. Now, when I walked the railroad tracks back there, which by the way, is easy to do, the railroad comes, the train comes in like once a day and it's really slow speed and there's a lot of route to dive out of the way if you have to. So I walked the railroad tracks there to get a better visual view. And what I noticed is that on both sides, both on the side that we own and on the resident side, there are a lot of large trees and large amounts of other greenery there. And so what I, basically what I said to the residents, based on my walking there, I think the visual issue could be the easiest of their concerns to solve because we already have such a large amount of natural visual barriers there. So then my question to you is, considering all of the greenery that we have there, is it in your plans, is it a solid part of your plans to keep like all of it up that is feasibly possible? Or are you guys planning to cut down a whole lot of that?
Yeah, if there's, if there is vegetation that's there, that's going to help with that visual. We'd rather not have to plant new trees that are tiny when we already have big trees that will help block that vision. So we haven't done a survey or assessment, obviously, of your property or of our property to figure out what is salvageable, but certainly we need to provide access, want to provide safe fire department access around the building in case of emergency, but we would maintain what we could back there if it's good, and if we can maintain it, we would.
Okay. And then my third issue, if we could stay on that screen, is I've, both on, at today's presentation and prior ones, I've liked the slides that we've seen, though myself and I know some other residents have kind of noticed, there hasn't been a whole lot of attention to the part of this plan that faces Cooper Road. So like we're talking about the purple area on the screen that's furthest to the left. I know, or at least if I recall correctly, I think that was generally going to be all apartments and not any commercial or anything on the first floor. Is that still...
Correct. That's the residential front door, so we pulled that off of Kenwood to emphasize Kenwood as the main retail street.
Question I had on that is, normally when these kind of urban or urban-ish or urban-type, whatever you want to call it, types of developments come forward, one of like the most core principles of that is that you're not doing residential on the first floor of areas that face main streets. You would always, you retail or commercial, what have you. So we're being sold here that type of development, but then that purple area to the left there, we're violating one of the core tenets of not putting residential right on the first floor on the street there.
It's the residential use, so that you, we have the lobby and front door, there's a drop-off, and then the remaining portion of that, as it goes westward or planned north on that, is envisioned to be the fitness area, be more storefront-type glass as if it were retail, so it's more of a commercial use. It's part of the residential amenities, but yeah, it's not having units on the first floor on the street there.
Schematic of that, what you're saying?
I don't in this presentation. We did have a view in a previous presentation, but yeah, that whole first level, where it comes closer to the retail, that number four is service, that, so trash and move-in, move-out deliveries for the residential is closest to the orange. Number three, which is the next blue circle, is that residential lobby entrance with the drop-off, that's with the curved pieces. And then as the purple continues north, that's the fitness area. Yeah, there would not be living units on the grounds.
So the purple on the curricular side, residential. If you had, you're talking about that lower floor as...
As a commercial-type, more utilitarian-type use, correct?
Stories above that for a total of three, residential?
There's three levels of residential above that, that first level. It actually pretty much aligns with the office, where we have three levels total, where we have retail and restaurant and the two levels of office. Since those are taller floor-to-floor heights, the roof of that aligns with the roof of four levels of the residential because they're smaller. Thank you. You're welcome.
Where's the entrance for deliveries? Like where would that be coming off?
We're still working through that. We actually, so that purple bar we've been talking about, you can see there is a kind of a beige-y or almost white color that comes vertically directly behind it and then turns and goes out to Cooper. So that would be a part of service for this end of the project, and we're still working through... And we're still working through, as we continue through, um, the development. The entrance that comes behind the retail on the far right, uh, there is entrance into the garage, but also we're, we're looking at that being a double height space. So you could have a service, not service, but, uh, delivery trucks. And it's not shown in the detail of the retail, but have a service board or within the retail. So we'd have easy access there to serve the right path for the north half of the town.
Big enough for service trucks, you know, semi truck or?
Yeah, we wouldn't be pulling a semi truck through there, but a box trucks and, and other vehicles like that, service restaurants. And, and alternatively, that, that service order could continue all the way to the right on the plan. So the, the looped road around the perimeter, they could pull, potentially there's a loading zone right at the end that services from that, from the north to, from the right into that. So it's off of Kenwood Road. Uh, you're not parking on Kenwood Road, you're pulling back on this more service drive.
Ultimately, our dream is restaurants destination points.
Right, exactly.
But I would put into your thinking, the consideration of servicing those businesses foremost too. However, it is that, you know, otherwise it's food, you can't service up here. It's a house business.
And not just stuff coming in, but especially with restaurants, there's a lot of wet food waste. So the, the disposal of red has to be enclosed. It's not just a dumpster you're throwing stuff in, uh, let alone just not being bad practice for doing that. Especially if there's residents living above, you know, and the exhaust coming up needs to exhaust up through the, the entire roof. It's not out the side because all this, you know, you have, you have a greasy food place and it's all lofting in the windows the whole time. Uh, that doesn't work. So, uh, especially the retail that, uh, the bar on the right hand side where you have residential directly on top of it for, for that length, we'd have shafts coming up through the residential so that wherever restaurants go over time, they can always then tap into one of those shafts and take their exhaust all the way up through the roof.
Thank everybody answered anything I would have possibly asked you. So I can't thank you enough for coming and clearing everything up.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
So a couple of other minor items. First of all, Happy New Year's. Look forward to a wonderful 22. Hope all of you had a wonderful holiday. The department head will talk about everything else. I'll just simply state that, um, while not all of his presenters could come tonight because of COVID, uh, you know, unfortunately, a number of our staff have been hit over the last week or two. Including last week, we were really praying there was no snow because we may not have been able to plow much. So most of them are now back, but it's, it's unfortunately making its way through our organization. Nothing to do other than just be aware of it. We're very, um, distanced and safe and, you know, most of them aren't getting it from, from work. They're getting it from home. As I always joke, we should just keep everyone at work and, um, that's the safest place for them to be. So that's all I have here.
Kelly?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Peters?
Nothing tonight. Mr. Cruz, do have a couple of things. You have a memo giving you a quick notification about our visit to the Hunt House on February 10th, if you're available. Love to have you if you guys can, RSVP to, um, oh, Chief, since he's here for Julie. But RSVP to Julie, if you get a chance on that, we'd love to have you at the house. We're going to show you just real quickly, uh, the work that's been taking place and kind of reintroduce you to the house since it's been closed for so long. Um, you'll also, um, just a quick update, uh, we talked about it in the past and it seemed to have pretty good favor. We have been discussing a fees resolution for the Recreation Center for Business Memberships. And that would be an adjustment of, um, qualification for a business membership instead of leaving that, leaving that limit where it currently is today, which is about 36 hours, 32 hours, I believe, a week. To bring that down to a lower level or no level, if you work in Blue Ash, you would then be qualified. So we're hoping to bring that to you next month. And then finally, and I know this main reason why everybody's here tonight, have an update on pickleball. Pickleball scene in Blue Ash is getting hot and, um, we are currently now offering pickleball in the Recreation Center, um, I believe throughout the week, Monday through Friday. And I think it's from two to four. I walked by today and both courts were filled, so it's nice to offer indoor opportunity for that. And then the capital budget for this year, we have a little bit of money outside to, um, kind of extend what we're doing outdoors as well this summer. We're going to have four courts on two of the tennis courts, but they're movable. Sawyer Point has the same example. We went down there, saw it was very successful and it's basically you can convert a tennis court to a pickleball court in like five minutes. So if you book a tennis court, um, because the pickle we were having, it's a tennis, so popular. We didn't want to take away, that was a joke. I hit my limit though, I know this so far. But we are tennis, tennis was so popular that we didn't want to displace tennis with pickleball. So now you can actually make a booking this summer. You'll be able to book court number eight and you'll be able to, uh, let us know whether or not you're playing pickleball or tennis on the same court, roll the pickleball courts out and then play pickleball or tennis to be up to you.
Where's the indoor pickleball at the rec center?
I'm sorry?
Where is the indoor pickleball?
Then the Blue Gym, so we have temporary lines down in the Blue Gym and then they have nets that roll out. And again, today, I mean, you're talking about 2:30 in the afternoon, both courts are full. It's just two courts, but I mean, you can probably serve eight to 10 people on average. So I'd like to see this picking up. I mean, I know it's just pickleball, but it is, you know, at the end of the day, it's us answering a call of residents and folks that came to council, came to us, you know, even admin, it was a pretty vocal group. And then we're slowly tiptoeing into it to see if it works. Thank you.
But yes, so Brian mentioned the, the fees resolution. I think maybe, you know, Kelly asking whether you want to continue considering this, put it on a future agenda item or you want to continue thinking about it, or you don't want us to change that anytime soon. I, I will say two comments as Brian and I have discussed it. One, we've always really liked, um, business membership. They pay a lot more and they use it a lot less as opposed to resident memberships who don't pay much and they use it a lot. So the ratio is really good. And I know there was a question before, you know, you worried about, you know, overuse and what have you. And that's a possibility, we could always dial it down. But, you know, we never really got that match eaten before COVID and now since COVID, we still really aren't even back to 2019 level. I suspect, you know, the definition of full-time workers is going to get harder and harder as people, you know, on average come in the office three days a week or something like that. So it, it, it does seem like it's a good time to experiment, try it out. Um, you know, you can always dial it back. Membership's only for one year, so you know, if it just really goes haywire, we just dial it back. So I think what he was asking was, you know, can you give us some direction on that? So we can kind of either drop it or bring it up in a future meeting. Does anyone have any thoughts?
My gut feeling would be I'd love to try it, but I don't think it should go to two hours a week of work in Blue Ash. I mean, I would think maybe 20, part halftime would be a way to start and then we could dial it easier. Right? If we went to zero hour or one hour.
Maybe, maybe 16 hours because it's two, two eight hour day, I think was the time, you know?
Versus going to somebody who stops by and, you know, works for two hours and just shows us a pay stub. I, I don't, I think that might be going a little too far personally.
Yeah, I mean, I suspect someone, I, I think that's not a bad idea. At the end of the day, someone paying, working two hours a week in Blue Ash probably isn't going to pay the $400 fee anyways. Because I'm not making enough to do that, but I, I get your point, you know? At least it's a nice next step.
Well, I think what, one, one good part about Mark's point, um, is by maybe having a minimum of, of time in Blue Ash is then that would weed out the type of people who maybe they work all over the tri-state and they hit Blue Ash two hours a week. That's not necessarily the kind of person that, the kind of situation we'd want to have in our gym. Mr. Walt, uh, how, how do we tell, uh, work from home? They may be not wanting to pay their taxes to the city if they're working from home. How do we, is it? I mean, their, their business address may well be, you know, their headquarters or, or office buildings, but if they're working from home?
We currently verify their pay stub. So that's, it's a little bit of a process at the front desk. If you, I mean, I know nobody here probably has ever gone through that, but, um, you basically bring in a pay stub within the past two weeks and, you know, it could be a 17-year-old, but they're verifying somebody's $150,000 pay stub at the front desk. Um, so it's a little bit, and if we have any questions on it, we'll then send it to finance and then finance will do an inquiry on it, especially if somebody got a, did a tax return last year or tax refund last year. We catch those every once in a while. And so then what they do is they actually calculate out to make sure they're paying the right amount of taxes as well too. And then they verify the amount of hours. The average, I wouldn't say the average person comes in, but a lot of people come in and blackout their entire pay stub. And so that process then will go to finance as well. So there's a lot of information shared, um, but it's obviously it's our verification process. You can't do it online because we need to verify your Blue Ash, that you're working in Blue Ash. It has to be done in person annually.
Cool. I, I think the number of people who are doing one shift at the US Bank in Blue Ash and one shift all over town, I think there's a lot of people like that. I don't think they're going to be, um, bum rushing our, our rec center. So, you know, to the, um, to the idea of, uh, let's keep as few restrictions as possible. I think that, that, that's supportable, especially as the, uh, as I trust the recreation staff. You know, if a thousand people sign up, uh, you know, the month after that, I think they probably slow that down so that they, if that was a problem. So I, I, I'd, I'd consider very little, um, unworking.
I feel like our capacity, our, our memberships have dropped a lot, right?
Yeah, the membership, not only during the pandemic, but even, even as I said, pre-pandemic, it, it had slowly leveled off and was not real strong, particularly among business membership. To Brian's point, I, you know, if, if you worked one day a week, for instance, in Blue Ash, but you live in Westchester, it's just not convenient to come here a whole lot and, and pay that kind of money. So just practically speaking, I just don't think you're going to get a lot.
Yeah, we have the ability to control it. Uh, we, I mean, we pull statistics on memberships all the time. Like David referenced earlier, we had a cap when business memberships were originally instated back, you know, going back 20, 25, 30 years, we've never hit it. We have actually, well, I take that back. We hit it when we were in the old building. And we were obviously at capacity at that point in time, but we knew the renovation was coming up. It was pre-2009 when we were starting to get really close to those numbers. And then when we got into the new building, we never reset a new number because we needed to figure out what that new number was, what's comfortable. Because otherwise you're just creating some arbitrary number. We didn't know if that was 5,000 Blue Ash, uh, business memberships or 4,000. And currently from, with that 2009 to now, we do not have an overcrowding issue and that we feel like is coming from our business members, other than January New Year's resolutions, Monday and Wednesday, you can hit it five o'clock.
That's over by January 8th.
Mine was over by the second. I was right in there tonight, to be honest. Any other question? Or?
Yeah, just wanted to give a quick update. The, obviously the Plantfield and Hunt Roundabout Project is slowed down due to the weather, but, um, they are working currently on the retaining wall at the Pepper Mill intersection. They're putting in the foundations now. That work will continue through the winter and as will, uh, other utility work that's going on there. So, uh, it will be a little bit slower until the weather starts being more cooperative.
I got to learn a lot about directional drilling when they were out in front of my office. That's cool.
Shouldn't you know about directional drilling? In your line of work?
On my side, yeah, that was bad. That was bad.
It's just bigger drilling that's outside. Chief?
Just one thing, we are actively testing right now. I think we got about four weeks before that cuts off. So if you know anybody that wants to work at a regional festival, this police department, send them my work. It's all I have.
The last one's going up there, you know, just, just, just a statement. All of our, you know, job recruitment efforts are much like the rest of the world. It's, it's, you know, there's just not applicants out there right now. So, um, we'll see how the spring and summer goes for seasonal health. As you remember, last year we had to cut hours because of our lifeguard. So, um, it'll be interesting.
Just wanted to remind council that in two weeks, don't come here. We have our council retreat. Go to Cooper Creek, 5:00 PM, we will serve dinner and we resume again the next morning at 9:00 AM. Just wanted to remind you all.
Danny?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Counselor?
So very briefly, today the Supreme Court reversed the, uh, emergency temporary standard for 100 worker mandate for vaccines. Kept in place those for health workers. Interestingly, that does not apply to the city, not because we don't have 100 employees, but because OSHA does not apply to political subdivisions. What would happen in Ohio is there's something known as PERP, which I'm forgetting the acronym. But PERP would have to adopt the OSHA standard for it, where it applied to local governments. So the point being is that with respect to any kind of vaccine mandate, uh, through the OSHA ETS standard, the Supreme Court said today, that's unlawful. I haven't read the opinion, uh, but, uh, I did read the, of course, shame on me for relying on any media account of what the opinion says stipulated. However, I don't think they would botch that in terms of the result. So that's just to be aware, uh, that there's also an effort in the Ohio General Assembly House Bill 218, which would, and it's now stuck in the Senate, it's stuck in the Senate since, uh, I believe it's November 25th, right around Thanksgiving, which would say that if you're going to have a vaccine mandate and that includes political subdivisions, cannot require vaccine cards and they have to be an FDA-approved vaccine that you have to require. There's also, uh, certain exceptions, uh, including a doctor's note or religious note. I'm sorry, or other personal exemption. And basically you have to, for the, for the way that the House bill is written, again, the Senate could change it. But the way it's written now, if you have some type of other personal exemption, all you need to say is you have a personal exemption and that's it. Interesting if you have, you need a doctor's note for the medical exemption. If you have some other, uh, view as to why you shouldn't have the vaccine, all you need is kind of your good faith statement as to why you don't need the vaccine. So at least the way it's current written. At any rate, that's still in the General Assembly to be decided. Who knows? But the emergency temporary standard for over 100 employers under OSHA has been held to date to be unlawful. Thank you. And Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year to everybody and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Jeff? I have three items. OKI had their meeting earlier today. Just to recap, OKI, I best describe it as like a regional planning or a regional government organization. The key item being that if you want federal transportation funds, you're going to have to deal with OKI. So that's what they had, I'm on, now Blue Ash has one seat on their Board of Directors, which I have. So like I said, the last time I brought this up, I attend the Board of Directors meetings because I'm on the Board of Directors. When they have executive committee meetings, I'm not on the executive committee and don't attend those meetings. Then after that meeting, I went to the Hamilton County Commissioner meeting because it wasn't long after that, where I learned the sad news that our former county engineer, Bill Brayshaw, passed away last week. If you knew Bill, you knew he was a great guy. He was just an excellent person to talk to. His wife, Joanne, is, is equally a fantastic person. Please keep them in your prayers. Bill was the county engineer for many, many years. My opinion, he did a fantastic job. He was, uh, everybody seemed to like him. So I forgot, I forgot the last thing I was going to say about him, but, um, but I mean, I think that covers it. Just fantastic, yeah, I was going to say, so even though he was an elected official who, who had over 800,000 constituents, he never came off that way. He was always, he was a great engineer, um, a great guy. But man, when you talk to him about a, about anything going on in the county, he, he was just sharp as a tack. He knew exactly what was going on, did the job real well. And then the, the third item I have is, is a, a future motion that I'm going to make at a council meeting into the future. Now that we're approaching our 20th anniversary of having a sister city program that's accomplished nothing for our residents, I'm going to introduce, I have two draft motions, that at least one of which will be introduced. The first one is quite simple. It's, it would simply seek to defund the program so that we can spend the money and the time spent on it on more productive pursuits. And then the backup motion I have in case the first motion fails, would update some policies and procedures for the program so that this would actually be a sister city cultural exchange program. It's not a cultural exchange program when it's really just a group of all white people or nearly all white people visiting another group of all white or nearly all white people and where our residents don't even get to participate in the events. That's like the antithesis of a cultural exchange program. So the, the five, I'm sorry, I haven't passed this around yet. I'll get that going. The five- The five, the five items I have in here would, first one would terminate the partnership with Ilmenel, Germany. The second item would require that any future sister city partnership would have to be in a country that is at least 60% non-white. The third one would require that any of our delegations to sister cities would have to be at least 25% non-white. The fourth item would say that except in extenuating circumstances, any sister city events that our city hosts needs to be open to Blue Ash residents. Now, the Blue Ash residents would be responsible for their cost of the event. So like if there was a sister city trip to the Reds ballgame, a resident who wants to join would have to pay for their Reds ticket and their popcorn, their drink, whatever. And then the last item would say that the Blue Ash Sister City Corporation would be required to deliver an annual report to city council, which presently we are not getting. So those two motions, these are just draft motions and we'll discuss this issue at a future meeting. That's all I have. Nothing tonight, sir.
Amy? Brian?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Nothing. Only thing I had was don't forget to turn in your Ohio Ethics Commission financial disclosure reports. Brian, I'm going to give her. Inquet, I don't ask too much. I make way too much detail at first.
Make copies.
Save the copies. Yeah, you save the copies. That's really all I have. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.